Thank you everyone for coming down here. We really appreciate it and for the public watching, thank you for watching us. First of all is the adoption of the agenda. We'll need a motion to adopt the agenda. So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, the agenda is adopted. Also, now we're on to item C, which is the approval of the September 26, 2019 minutes, and those were sent to you prior to the meeting. And any questions or additions? We'll need a motion to approve those minutes.
Some more.
Has been a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. And so now, we are on to our normal recognition of the elected officials that come down, and we have a very special treat today, which I'm very excited about. And so it's my honor to introduce our newly-elected mayor, Mayor John Cooper. Come on up, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. This is your first meeting since I was sworn in, and so I wanted to come down and thank each of you specifically. It's my second week on the job, but a lot of you have been doing this for a period of time, and I know it's a hard job. And I wanted to just spend a little bit of time with you because what you do is so important. Now, for a decade Nashville has done a lot to encourage growth, and we see the results on our skyline, and the people who are moving here and the companies who want to be part of our success story. But maybe not everybody has benefited as much from growth as we would like for them to do. And traffic has gotten worse, and now is the time to rebalance our city and for neighborhoods to receive the dividends of downtown success. And for everybody to be thoughtful and deliberate about development. I want to do a quick shout-out and just thank the neighbor-to-neighbor white paper that was issued a couple of months ago, and for the staff and you working so closely to think of better ways of engaging the community and having a great outcome. Our land is precious, it's irreplaceable, and what is built on it has to add to our lives and not detract from it. And I think you all are the place to begin to work this out, and that's going to happen with great community engagement. And we have to figure out how to share the benefits and not just the costs of growth. Diversity is not necessarily its own reward, but it has to be accompanied in a beautiful, livable environment with access to green space and mobility. And this is a high-stakes arena. Every other Thursday, this is a high-stakes arena where money is made and the quality of life is influenced. And it sometimes doesn't seem to be a fair fight to people in Nashville, you know, because it's between a land-use industry, really, and residents. But with your knowledge and your hard work and your patience, I know you are here to make it fair. I know you're here to make it fair, and so let's work together and worry about the process. Let's worry about listening to neighborhoods. Let's worry about how to do that well. Let's employ technology because how we communicate with each other, so much is based on technology, to communicate accurately and adequately to everybody involved. But I give you this hard job, and that's why I came to say thank you, right? Because it's not easy, and the trick is to make it fair. I appreciate it very much. I'm going to run back to my office. I think you all, as citizens, have drawn almost the hardest job there is as citizens in Nashville. Every other Thursday, there's a lot of listening that has to happen, and I just want to appreciate that very much to each of you. Thank you. Thank you, Lucy and Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for coming down. We appreciate it. I think we, as the mayor said, we have a lot going on, but I truly believe that with our director and our team, we have a great foundation to lead this city, and you guys do a great job. And so Lucy, thank you for all your hard work and your team's hard work. The commissioners and I have been working with them a long time. They put in a lot of hours, late-night hours and weekends, and so I know that the commissioners and I appreciate you all very much. Thank you, Mayor, for coming down. So now we are on to the council members. So you guys have to bear with us a little bit. We've got a lot of new council members, and so I think we always go about this process in it's first-come, first-served, and so Councilman Nash is newly-elected. He used to be a commander in the police force, and so I want to say congratulations to him as well. Come on up, Councilman. Come on up. We appreciate you coming down. I think you've got to kind of talk into the microphone a little bit.
Okay. I'm talking right in the mic. I feel like I'm on a TV show. I just came here to listen and learn. Certainly, I want to thank you for the work you do, and I can let you know that the planning director and her staff have been great so far to work with. I make a phone call and I get all kinds of questions answered, so I appreciate the work you do and look forward to working with you over the next four years.
Thank you, Councilman, and congratulations. And I think that we have Councilmember Tom Cash. Come on up, and welcome, sir. We appreciate you coming down.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the recognition, and I'm excited to be working with you all. There is an item in my district that's up today, and I will wait until it's up to speak to it, but thank you.
Item 17, and we'll get to that. And then what we do, Councilmember, just so you know, is we generally allow, let you go very last, so you have the last say. Okay. Any other council members? I don't want to miss anybody. All right. Perfect. All right, so we are on item E, which is items for deferral or withdrawal. Lisa?
The following items are for deferral or withdrawal. Item 1A, 2019 CP 003003, on page 4 of your agenda. The Bordeaux White Creek Canes Trinity Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 24 meeting. Item 1B, the associated case, on page 5 of your agenda. 2019 SP 066001. Clarksville Pike Mixed-Use Site SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 25 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 2, 2019 SP 027001. The Roots East SP. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 3, 2019 SP 045001. 2500 West Hyman Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the November 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 4, 2019 SP 048001. Cedars of Kane Ridge SP. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely, and I will note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 5, 2019 SP 056001. The Robertson Avenue Residential SP. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 6, 2019 SP 061001, on page 6 of your agenda. 832 West Trinity. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 7, 2019 S 109001. The Richard Farms Subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 8, 2019 S 16001. The 1242 Property Solutions LLC property. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 9, 2019 CP 011003, on page 6 of your agenda. The South Nashville Community Plan. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 24 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 11, 2018 SP 018001, on page 7 of your agenda. 325 Flora Maxwell Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the November 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 14, 2019 S 19001, on page 7 of your agenda. Kirk Roberts Seaton Property. Staff recommendation is to defer to the November 14 Planning Commission meeting.
All right, Commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral, but let's go through the list to make sure we have these correct. So items 1A, 1B, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, and 14. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes.
All right. Commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it, and those items are deferred. We are on to item F, which is the consent agenda. Lisa?
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as a notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. Item number 10, 2013 SP 029003, on page 6 of your agenda. 49th and Tennessee Phase 2 SP Amendment. It's a request to amend the 49th and Tennessee specific plan for property located on 49th Avenue to add six multifamily residential units for a total of 61 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 13, 2019 S 188001, on page 7 of your agenda. Lot 70 Southwood Subdivision. It's a request for final plat approval to create two lots for property located on Brewer Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 16, 2019 Z 141PR 001, on page 8 of your agenda. A request to rezone from AR 2A to MULA zoning for property located on Hickory Hollow Parkway. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 18, 2019 Z 150PR 001. A request to rezone from R10 to MUL zoning for property located on Liberty Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 19, 2019 Z 151PR 001. A request to rezone from IWD to MUG zoning for property located on French Landing Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. Under Other Business, item 20, Adoption of the 2020 Calendar. Item 21, Grant Application to the Tennessee Department of Transportation Federal Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Program for Continuation of Nashville Connector, a Transportation Demand Management Program to help reduce mobile source emissions and improve air quality. And item number 25, to accept the Director's Report and approve administrative items.
Thank you, Lisa, and the Commissioners have heard the items on the consent agenda, but before I go through these, I do want to take a note on item 20, which is the calendar. I want to make sure that all the Commissioners are extremely comfortable with the calendar. We need to publish this and get it out for transparency and public hearing purposes. And so a couple of notes on here is that this last year, the Director and I had talked, we had, several years ago, we had problems making quorum in the summertime because of everyone's very busy schedules and family time. And so this year, we did one meeting in June and one meeting in July, and it seemed to work out really well. We did not miss a quorum, I don't believe, right, Director? And so that worked really well. And then also, we meet in November and December one time a month because of the holidays. And so I want to point that out to you all, make sure you guys are comfortable with it, see if there's any discussion, and if not, we can obviously keep it on the consent agenda. Vice Chair, you want to add anything to the calendar?
I like the calendar.
You see, we all seem to like the calendar. I hope you do too, and so I just wanted to point those out to you all, just to make sure that we put those on there. So seeing no discussion on the calendar, the items that were on the consent agenda were items 10, 13, 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 25. Is that correct, Lisa?
That's correct.
Okay, Commissioners, you've heard the items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda? Has been a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted, which means for our audience, I know it can get confusing a little bit, but we are going to consider three items for public hearing tonight, I believe, items 12, 15, and 17. Is that correct, Lisa? All right. Perfect. We are ready to go on item 12.
The next item on the agenda tonight is a request to rezone from CS, R10, and RS20 to SP zoning to permit a multifamily development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. This site is located just east of Gallatin Pike. The site is made up of four parcels zoned CS, R10, and RS20. The surrounding land use is mostly commercial to the south and east and residential to the north and west. The plan proposes a residential development of 442 multifamily units in the form of stacked flats and townhomes. The plan includes a clubhouse, swimming pool, and bio-retention area in the center of the site. The stacked flats are proposed to be three stories in height. The townhome units are proposed to be a maximum of two stories in height. One Mile Parkway and Conair Drive are collector avenues. The development is oriented toward One Mile Parkway with the more intense stacked flats along the collectors. The townhomes are along Apple Valley Road, transitioning into the residential neighborhood. The plan includes an all-purpose path along the eastern end of the site to provide better connectivity from the residential neighborhoods to the services along Gallatin Pike corridor. The policy is T3 suburban neighborhood evolving, T3 suburban mixed-use corridor, and conservation. The plan proposes an intensity of development which is consistent with both the T3 NE and T3 CM policy areas. Providing a diversity of housing at this location supports the existing businesses along Gallatin Pike, as well as current and planned transit services. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing, and the applicant has 10 minutes, and you can save two minutes of the 10 for rebuttal. Welcome, and please state your name and address.
Hello, Commissioners. Andrew Walters with Catalyst Design Group. I'd like to lodge a formal complaint about the height of the mic, too, as well.
Well taken. Yes, sir.
No, Andrew Walters with Catalyst Design Group, 5016 Centennial Boulevard. Thank you for your service to this board. Here representing LDG Development, I'm joined by Joshua Hayston with LDG. LDG, just a little about them. This would be their third project, fourth project, excuse me, that they've done and approved. Two other SPs that they've done. One is under construction, Buffalo Trail on Dickerson Pike. They really are one of the industry leaders in workforce and affordable housing in this area. They own and operate their projects. They don't sell them. They own them long-term. So they're a really quality developer that does good work, and so we're proud to represent them here tonight. As Jordan mentioned, we are recommended for approval. We've had a community meeting for this on September 22. Of course, it was a little bit delayed with the Planning Commission with the new election and the new council member, but Councilmember Young attended that meeting. There was probably six or seven community members there, so it wasn't heavily attended. But we did have a productive meeting, and actually, one of the things that came out of that meeting was a recommendation from the neighbors to add a little pocket park there at the northwestern corner of the site, which is near the intersection of Conair and Apple Valley Road. So we made that improvement to the plan, kept a similar density, but we were excited to do that. We felt like it was a good opportunity to kind of work with the neighbors and introduce something that they wanted to see. So with that, I'll reserve the rest of my time for questions from the Board or from the neighbors to answer any objections that they may have. That's okay.
Thank you, sir. Two-minute deal. We'll reserve the two minutes for rebuttal, and appreciate you coming down. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? No one wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, sir. And so this part of the public hearing, citizens get two minutes each, and then you just have to state your name and address for the record, and we really appreciate you coming down. Thank you.
All right. My name is Brian Quarles.
And you've kind of got to talk into the microphone. I'm sorry.
No problem.
It doesn't pick up very good. Thank you.
To you, Mr. Atkins, the Chair. This is Jessica Farther, Vice Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Brian Quarles, and I live in Madison on the corner of Conair and Apple Valley. And I am in opposition of the new housing complex they would like to put over there because it will create a high volume of traffic. And right over there where Lowe's is, that's where they want to put it. And during high traffic, people use that area to try to get over to Gallatin Road, and it's a backlog. It's only one way in, one way out. Also, the fact is that we would prefer, rather, a multi-apartment. We prefer single-family homes because people who own homes would take better care of it versus an apartment complex, which at some point will probably end up becoming Section 8 housing, and then the community would be rundown. And me, as a residential homeowner, I'm concerned about property value, that the property value will go down and not go up. So, I mean, they gave us a very beautiful presentation. We had a very wonderful meeting, and I appreciate everything that they said. Everything looks good on paper, but when it comes into actuality, it doesn't turn out the way that they hope it will. I've seen the other housing complex over on Trinity Lane. I pass it on a regular going to church, and the things that they said it would do, I have not seen. There's been no improvement on Trinity Lane. There's been no additional businesses being built there. It's rundown. It's trashy, and we don't want that in our community. We want, if it's anything, I would prefer them to put nice, single-family homes there that people can have backyards that they'll take care of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming down. Ma'am, would you like to speak? Oh, sir, we're still working. There we go. Come on up. Welcome. Appreciate you coming down. You may have to pull that down a little bit. There we go.
Hello, my name is Vanessa Quarles, and I am Brian Quarles', his wife. And like he said, we live on the corner of Apple Valley and Conair. And I agree with everything he was just saying. I was going to say the same thing. I was also concerned with the upkeep of the apartments because after so many years, sometimes when you look at apartments, they tend to go down, and nobody wants to fix them up. So I'm concerned about the upkeep of the apartments, if they are there, but I'm more concerned about the traffic and the way the community, the property value of our community, you know, how it's going to affect the property value of our community. And I think that was probably all, but we did like the changes with the dog park and that little corner area. So that's all I can say.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, sir. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Peters, and I'm a resident of 1305 Apple Valley Road that will be facing this property. And the big concern that we have is just the density. For the amount of property that's there and for the street access that's available, 442 units is quite a large amount of traffic and other congestion and safety issues that we're just not sure our residential neighborhood is well-equipped to handle. So while we, obviously, some development of the property, and again, I appreciate the park changes that they made, but our main concern still is the density of 442 units coming into our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? I'll make sure we get to everybody. Oh, come on up. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you so much. My name is Lauren Hunt. I live right off of Apple Valley on Monticello, so I'm just nearly a block away. I am a first-time homeowner in that area. I moved to Nashville two years ago, and looking around for property to buy was very difficult for me. And I found this neighborhood that's full of single-family homes. There are families with children that are thriving. They have yards, like he said. So I just want to echo again that there is a strong community that is against this. The density of 442, that's really a very high number. The roads are so small. There's only a certain amount of space there. Access to Gallatin, I know they're going to increase it a little bit, but it's going to be rough. And I just wanted to, I didn't come prepared to speak, but I did want to say that I'm against that amount of volume. I don't think it's going to be good for the neighborhood, and I do very much worry about the property value as well. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. Seeing none? The councilman's not here, so two-minute rebuttal.
Is it on? Okay, thank you again. And as Mr. Quarles mentioned, we really did have a productive meeting. We really do appreciate their input and value, their considerations that they have, so we don't want to dismiss any of that. I will just kind of briefly touch on some of the items that they mentioned. As far as traffic study, as you guys are well-aware, anything of this density has to perform a traffic study. That has been done and submitted to Public Works. The recommendations, actually, in all honesty, this site is very well situated from a traffic and access standpoint, has multiple ways in and out, which should help reduce congestion as volume can disperse in different directions. We do have a couple of improvements that we're looking at. One in particular is related to the pedestrian movements, which we added the Greenway there to connect Apple Valley to One Mile Parkway, but there are some pedestrian improvements going out to Gallatin Pike to make sure that bus transit is available and access is available for pedestrians. One of the suggestions from the neighborhood was also to add a four-way stop at Conair and Apple Valley. Apparently, there's a speeding problem through Apple Valley, so we want to be sensitive to that, and we'll be working with Public Works and the traffic engineer to suggest a four-way stop study on that corridor. One of the comments about Section 8 housing, as I mentioned earlier, LDG is a long-term holder of their properties. They have over 25 properties around the southeast. Is that fair? And they don't sell any of them. They're a long-term holder. They've never sold a property that they've developed, so their intent is clearly to own this long-term. It is not Section 8 housing, so that won't ever be part of the consideration. Lastly, one of the suggestions on the townhomes and whether to make those single-family units, you know, this, working closely with staff, we went through a couple rounds of PRC question and answers with staff, and really felt like a townhome, an attached townhome product provided an appropriate transition to the residential neighborhood to the north. And so, working back from the attached three-story multifamily into attached towns and then into the neighborhood, we felt like it was an appropriate transition. So with that, I'll go.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed, and Vice Chair, you want to go first?
Anytime we see projects with this scale of new units, it definitely, you know, I know it's going to be a big change for the neighborhood. There's no question. 440 units is a lot of new units in an area. That said, when you look at the location, the proximity to Gallatin Road, the proximity to transit, current transit, and maybe future transit options, you know, this is the kind of place where we want to see density occur. We all know there's a huge need for affordable housing in Nashville. Based on the quick look I did at the developer's track record, they are owner-operator of quality affordable housing, and I think that is a critical need in this area. So it sounds like they have been sensitive to some of the neighbors' concerns around the additional density and trying to make an appropriate transition, and given it's consistent with policy, I'm in support.
Commissioner Dibbs?
Yeah, as far as agreeing with the policy and where this would be, I think it's very consistent on what we would expect for this area. It definitely fits as far as, you know, Gallatin and proximity as well. I would personally, I wish it did have a little bit more of a diversity. Maybe they did have some single-family in-town homes. I think that they have such an opportunity with this much acreage to have more diversity within it. However, I mean, I do believe this type of area does, you know, encourage this type of density, and, you know, with the traffic study being done, I mean, unfortunately, traffic's an issue everywhere, but like I said, I wish there was more diversity in it. I wish there was some opportunities for people to purchase a home within there. I do, you know, just that, as one of the residents said, there is definitely a different type of ownership when you, I mean, an ownership to an area when you actually... different type of ownership when you, I mean, an ownership to an area when you actually own a home, and that diversity, I think, would be well. But however, I can't disagree with the way it's set up, and if we're gonna encourage density in an area, this would be the place to do it. So I would be supportive of it.
Commissioner Black's here.
To follow up on Commissioner Tibbs' point, I have a question for staff. Was there any conversation about perhaps having more diverse housing types in there? And I understand, I agree with Commissioner Farr about the location and just transit being more ideal here than in other places, but it obviously would be hard for a neighbor to swallow to see this many units coming in. So I just wonder whether, was there ever a discussion among staff about either decreasing the diversity, I mean, decreasing the density or increasing the diversity of housing types?
So when looking at, oh, so when looking at the policy, that was really loud. When looking at the policy and the location, and we're talking about half of the property is within a mixed-use corridor policy, which is a really intense policy. And then it's a neighborhood-evolving policy, and we're very close to those existing transit. This is at a density of about 20 units per acre, which for a mixed-use corridor is actually kind of mid-range. And so by working with the developer to get two-story, small groupings of townhomes along Apple Valley wrapping the corner to Conair, that provided us with the ability to transition from the more intense that's close to One Mile Parkway and provide those shorter heights and to transition. And so we felt that the intensity was appropriate and needed to support the businesses and the transit that already exist along Gallatin Pike, especially given the policy.
Commissioner Eland?
Another couple of questions for staff. The traffic issue was raised by a couple of community members, and I'm just, just for everyone's clarity, how Public Works and, is that too loud, departments work with the developer in understanding those, the traffic studies that are done and integrating those into their work. Might be helpful for some clarification.
Sure. And we do have a representative from Public Works here if there's more specific questions. But a traffic study was prepared, and when those traffic studies happen, the developer goes in and has a meeting with Public Works to scope out what the extent of the study is. They did that. They prepared the study, and there's a list of improvements in your staff report that the developer will be making in order to remediate some of the causes. Now, I will also say that given, if you'll look at the traffic table that's provided in the staff report, given the existing CS zoning and some of the uses that are able to be built within that existing CS, the traffic actually is less impactful for multifamily than some of the uses that are permitted within over half of the property. And so this is seen as being a bit less impactful than the existing zoning.
And one other question, one thing that comes to mind is, you know, how this interfaces with the neighborhood sort of on the ground. And I'm assuming that the townhouses, how they line the north side of the property is the attempt to try to marry the old with the new. Is the property actually surrounded by sidewalks? Is that part of the condition?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sidewalks will be along all public streets, and an additional sidewalk along the eastern property line is a more direct connection to One Mile Parkway.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
I think all my questions were answered, and I'll say, when I first looked at this, I did think it was quite dense for the area, but I think, based on staff's presentation and some of the clarifying points, I do think this is an appropriate area. I definitely understand what the neighbors' concerns are, but like my fellow commissioners, I'm inclined to support it.
Commissioner Calhoun?
I tend to agree. I think, I agree with Commissioner Tibbs. I'd like to see more diversity in this design, but I think it's consistent with what we've been, I mean, with the policy and understand the neighbors' concern and appreciate those, but I think it makes sense.
Commissioner Sims?
Always falls on me to be the outlier, so because zoning changes is not a right, the developers and owners are asking for an SP. And in SP, the neighbors do have a right to give their feedback. And they've given us three things. I think one was the park, which they incorporated. The second was traffic, which I think is addressed as much as we can address it in the city of Nashville right now. But the other is the density. And we are going quite to the extreme in the density here. And I understand all the ramifications of not doing that when we have an affordable housing crisis, when we have a need for more density around our corridors. But it feels like we're in an either-or situation, and I hate it when you get into one of those, that there's not something in the middle where the neighborhoods feel like they're not moving into something that's gonna be all apartments right next to them. And so this idea of having a little more diversity in the type of housing that's there to incorporate it more into the neighborhood feels to me like a legitimate request.
Commissioners, it's time for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no? One no. And it passes. Good discussion, Commissioners. Now we're on to item 15.
The next item is a request for a concept plan approval to create 23 lots with five duplex lots for a total of 28 units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. This concept plan was previously presented to the planning commission in 2006 and approved with conditions. The applicant did not move forward with the development plans for final plat within the timeframes outlined in those subdivision regulations, and the concept plan is now expired. The applicant is now seeking approval of a new concept plan under the current Metro subdivision regulations. The site is located just south of Vietnam Veterans Boulevard and just north of the Cumberland River. The zoning is R-20. The site is within the suburban neighborhood maintenance and conservation policies. For T-3, N-M, and conservation policies, the conventional regulations found in Chapter 3 of the subdivision regulations are utilized. The plan proposes 18 single-family residential cluster lots and five duplex lots for a total of 28 units. Lots range in size from 10,000 square feet to a little over 23,000 square feet. The proposed lots will be accessed from a new public street, which will be an extension of Spring Branch Drive. The subdivision was reviewed against the standards in Chapter 3. The subdivision meets the minimum standards of the R-20 zoning district. Each proposed lot has frontage on a public street. All reviewing agencies have recommended approval. The proposal is for a cluster lot subdivision under existing entitlements. No rezoning is proposed with this application. The cluster lot subdivision does not allow more density than what would be allowed under the R-20 zoning district. Cluster lot subdivisions allow a reduction in lot size to work with existing topography and create open space. The lot area in a subdivision can be reduced down to zoning districts. The site is zoned R-20. This plan includes 18 clustered lots, clustered down to a minimum size of 10,000 square feet and five duplex lots, which contain a minimum of 20,000 square feet. In cluster lot subdivisions, a minimum of 15% of the development must be set aside as open space. The plan proposes 3.6 acres of common open space, which is 29% of the site's acreage. The plan meets all the requirements of the subdivision regulations and the zoning code for cluster lot subdivisions. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, sir. We'll open this item for public hearing, and the applicant has 10 minutes. Welcome. And you can save two of the 10 for rebuttal.
I will do that. Jeff Hines with Catalyst Design Group. Appreciate you listening to us this evening. I think staff made a very thorough point that this is not a request for any greater density or, in any case, other than what the base zone allows here. It is for a cluster lot subdivision, which allows us to create a common space in the center of a loop driveway with the homes fronting that space and accomplish both our stormwater means in that area as well as some community activity areas for walking. What we would offer is a couple of key points. I think you're gonna hear from some neighbors. We did speak with the councilman. I know he spoke with the Harbor Village Neighborhood Association and had a meeting with them. Their concerns, I think you're gonna hear, are about two things: drainage and traffic. And Harbor Village has some drainage issues, and I think in your package you may have some photographs. However, the majority of those issues are coming from a watershed that drains from the mall and Rivergate Village and more of the commercial area, which is about twice the size of the watershed that this subdivision sits in. We can help those issues and will help those issues with our installation of new stormwater detention and upsizing the drainage piping beneath Twin Hills Drive, which there were some photographs that showed that overtopping. That drainage is undersized right now. So the project will cure some of the issues that you hear or will hear spoken about. The other thing I would offer is, and I think staff made this point, is by a straight subdivision, this would be possible for 29 lots with seven duplex lots. We have 28 lots with five duplex lots. So in effect, we are less than covering the area with all 20,000-square-foot lots, per se. I think it's a much better design. With that said, I will mention that, one other thing, I think the Harbor Village Association mentioned a request as part of the traffic to look at a four-way stop study. For the stop sign is currently a two-way stop at Twin Hills Drive and Paula Drive, and we are willing to do that study as part of coming back before you for preliminary plat. So we'll offer that. And I'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, sir. Two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Now, this is the support part. I want to make sure we get. They don't want to break your leg. So anyone wishing to speak in support, I want to make sure we get everybody. All right. So seeing none, now anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. There we go. Welcome. And two minutes, and then please state your name and address.
As a representative, president of the Homeowners Association, I believe I've been given five minutes to speak to.
Yes, sir, five minutes. We got you. Yep, and it's right there.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Clint Davis. I'm the president of the Harbor Village Homeowners Association in Madison, a community of 163 homes. With me are volunteer board members Jack Freckman, Marilyn Hayes, Bernadette Farrell, and Bill Diaz. In addition, several homeowners from Harbor Village are with me, and I would ask if they would just stand for just a moment and be recognized. I thank them for making the trip down here. We appreciate this opportunity to address you this evening. Like you, as a homeowners association, we are elected to represent the best interests of the people that we represent and to make decisions and forward those in what we believe will be the greater good for the entire community. I hope that you have already received the packet of photographs and some talking points that we sent in advance and have had an opportunity to look at those. First of all, I want you to know that we are not, per se, opposed to this proposed development. We simply have concerns that we hope will be addressed by the developer as the project moves forward. We are concerned about primarily, as the previous speaker said, the impact of stormwater on our, on our community. And while it is true that we get water from virtually 360 degrees around us because the whole area drains into a private lake, Coleman Lake, there is a tremendous amount of water that comes from the direction of this particular property. And in support of that, I would direct your attention to, I believe, the first set of photographs and the material were sent, which is a picture of overflowing Twin Hills Drive during a storm. I believe that the dates may be on that, taken from 2019, I believe. That, all that water that you see going over Twin Hills Drive in that particular instance was from the development area in question and the areas surrounding, in the nearby surrounding area of them. We also are, as he said, concerned about traffic. This new exit and entrance to the proposed area is directly across the street from the entrance and exit to Harbor Village, where the 163 people enter and exit on a daily basis. We hope that controlled entrance or exit from there with stop signs will be part of the proposed plan, and we support the idea of doing a study at the intersection of Paula Drive and Twin Hills Drive. You may not be aware, but the traffic, and this is an aside, the traffic on Myatt is so bad, in the evenings especially. People will take a very circuitous path, up Spring Branch, over Shepherd Hills, down Paula, and then onto Twin Hills in order to avoid what is a very long process to get out onto Gallatin or move onto Rivergate or whatever. We provided you with photos of both dry and stormwater flooding conditions, taken from essentially the same perspective. Hope you've had an opportunity to review those. From these photos, you can see the many effects of rainstorms on our property. Most of those photos, if not all of them, are taken from the perspective of water coming down from the proposed area, coming down from what is essentially east of us. Although there are certain wow factors associated with that first photo of the water coming across Twin Hills Drive, that's not the typical thing that we experience. The other photos are very typical of what we experience and under not particularly heavy rainstorm conditions. The water comes down there so quickly that it fills up quite, quite fast. This year, we had a storm so bad that it came three feet up onto our clubhouse, got into the basement where all of our pool equipment is, and knocked out our pool pump, and then cost us over $1,000 to get that replaced. The problem has gotten worse as more development has taken place and land has been cleared without much planning for where that water's going to go. And so we're hoping that, in this particular instance, getting way out ahead of the project, you will see to it that the contractor is held to a high standard of retaining the water where it originates and seeing to it that it goes into a detention-retention pond and keeps, stays away from us. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. If y'all would just line up that way in the middle of the aisle there, that would be great. Thank you, sir.
Yes, my name's John Bennett. I live on 2113 Paula Drive. I've been there for 35 years. And when I bought the property, I asked first if those woods would ever be developed, and they said, no, it's a flood zone. And it is a flood zone. I don't know if it's labeled that or not, but every year, at least once or twice a year, when we get two days of hard rain, both sides of my street, I mean, my house, are just like a river, all flowing into the area they want to develop. Every house up and down Paula Drive and East Hills drains into that, and it's like a river going into it from everybody's house. And all that water goes down to where they are talking about. It floods every year at least once. And on top of that, the woods there, the land, it's like, you got wet weather springs underneath it. It's all limestone. There's an area right behind my house in the woods, it's about this big around, that when you get two days of rain, it's shooting water this high off the ground. That's coming up. Now, they might talk about fixing the drain water. This water comes up from wet weather springs underneath the ground. I mean, I've spent a fortune trying to keep my basement dry, and you can't do it. But all the houses on Paula Drive and East Hill are up higher, and it all drains down into that area. And it all comes across, goes all the way down, goes Harbor Village. I don't know how they think they're gonna stop that. They keep saying they will, and I know that, you know, they'll probably try, but that's, that's a big concern. Plus, we're gonna lose all our wildlife. We got deer, wild turkey. I mean, I bought my house there because of privacy, sit on the back porch at night, watch the turkey, wild deer, and, you know, all that's gonna be gone. But if you build houses in there, they will flood.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down. Come on up, sir.
Well, I used to use a...
Well, I use a microphone because I'm a public speaker for most of my life. But what we've run into here is where he's planning to put, and he's going to put his retention pond, that pond will be filled up in about 10 minutes, and then it's going to overflow. And then his dream of solving the problem is to put a six-foot culvert underneath the roadway that's just going to give him access. Well, once the water can no longer get through that pipe and is filled up, and then it begins to overflow again, you're going to have more flood problems up here. And as the man said, it's a wet zone. It's been a wet zone forever. There's water, and even above that, the new construction and the houses that were built, that property drains to this property, and this property drains to our property, and it all comes together at Coleman Lake. Okay? Now, you're going to add 26, 28 houses plus duplexes, and you've got 45 houses down below that surround the lake. So you're going to make 26 houses, make $7 million, and you're going to drown out 45 houses, and they're going to get flooded because the water gets almost up under our houses as it is when we get these torrential downpours, and usually during just a normal storm. So you're going to add 28, you're going to remove 45, and that doesn't help Nashville very much. And you're going to add more traffic. Now, I've already had an accident at the corner they're talking about. The people don't stop. Stop signs don't mean anything. It's a suggestion. Maybe I'll stop if I want to, maybe I won't. I've already had them, twice a week, I have to slam on brakes and try to keep from killing somebody because they get to a stop sign and they punch it. We have a four-way stop down at the other corner. What do you think four-way stop means? Look real quick and give it the gas. They don't stop. Thank you very much.
And, sir, would you state your name and address?
Sir? My name is William Diaz, D-I-A-Z. I live at 267 Harbor Village. My background's nuclear engineering, nuclear physics, okay? And we always had to do a study before we started a project.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lisa Walker, and I own properties at 2112 and 2116 East Hill Drive, and I'm here to oppose the Spring Branch development. This proposed development backs up to my properties. I am really concerned as to what is going on with the planning. I received notice indicating there would be a public hearing regarding the zoning proposal for 17 lots. A few weeks later, I received another notice that indicated the property was being considered for 28 lots, including five duplexes. This is very concerning, considering the original notice received was for 17 lots. But the printed hearing notice changed to 28 lots. A revised plan was submitted online, 9/18, and we're not aware of what changed during those two days since the earlier notice was 17. More concerning is the stormwater that was approved on 9/22. We have friends that have waited long periods of time to get stormwater approval that included huge costs. Received stormwater approval on 9/22 appears to be record speed. These are major concerns, but there are more. It's concerning that a company out of Mount Juliet would come into our small community and change the entire landscape. The existing properties are single-family homes on one-acre lots in a well-established neighborhood of which myself and my family have been a part of for more than 50 years. To add to my concern is that we have a lot for sale that backs up to this development, and we're almost guaranteed to lose in excess of $25,000 as a result of the proposed development. Is that fair? Another major concern is stormwater. There are 21 existing properties that back up to this development. The vacant land has been a part of the community system forever. The property has been a basin for all water runoff since the community was originally developed more than 50 years ago.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ma'am? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Doris Barnett. I'm at 2123 Paula Drive. My house showing up near the end of the circle on your spoon up there. And I want to oppose this proposal because, as previously stated by others who have come up here, the rainwater that comes down from our hillside into that area has a tendency to flood that entire background area. If we were to build there, not only would we push that water off into the Harbor Village area, we would also make sure that the people who are building these houses, they're going to buy in that area, will have flood zones. They will be in a flood zone. Standing on my back porch during a heavy rainstorm, I can see the water building up. I see it in the ground behind that. You don't show the actual plot numbers, and I don't know them off the top of my head. But 2123, it says, backs up to that area, and I can look out and see the water rising during a heavy storm. If we continue to build that without having some really good plan for moving that stream, which I think is an EPA consideration, then we could just basically say these houses are not livable. That is not a good plan. Thank you.
Oh, welcome, sir.
My name's Tony Pritchett, 147 Harbor Village Drive. I've lived there a year now. And traffic is bad everywhere, understood. Rain runoff is bad in this area, understood. One thing I wanted to ask, has anyone talked to TDEC about environmental issues on the lake because of sediment or runoff? Mainly because it's a wonderful fishing lake, and it has freshwater mussels in it that are, in many areas, endangered. I don't know if the three species that I have found in that lake are endangered, but I know that we have a nice colony of freshwater mussels in the lake. And I'm just concerned about those guys and the fish. That's one reason I bought there. And so I just wondered if TDEC had been talked to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come on up. You're welcome.
My name is Marilyn Hayes. I live at 505 Harbor Village Drive, which used to be Spring Branch Drive, which is what gets confusing when they talk about the extension of Spring Branch Road. I didn't move. They made us change the name of the street because they said it was confusing to traffic back when a third development of Harbor Village was built. They changed the part I lived on that was Spring Branch to Harbor Village. Now, there's two Harbor Villages. Only say that because if this does go forward, I can suggest that you may consider changing that name. Years ago, we had a resident that husband passed away, because, and of course, this was before GPS, et cetera, but had trouble because there's a bunch of spring branches, and they don't connect. I'm sure you guys know that. The other thing I wanted to clarify, Coleman Lake, which is a private 20-acre, 22-acre, there's some discrepancy, but lake that is in, you've seen the pictures, that was a quarry back years and years before any of us were around. Apparently, sometime in the '40s, after it filled up with too many springs, they let it go. So it is a natural lake. It is supposedly restricted or covered under the wildlife, and that's what Tony was talking about, that we do, that whole area is a greenway, and we talk about green passages and green living, et cetera. And I think that needs to be considered along with every other comment here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? We want to make sure we get everybody. Come on up, sir.
Good afternoon. Mark Walker, I have Lisa's husband. She just spoke a minute ago, and she wanted to, or we wanted to mention that I'm not sure if the staff took in consideration that in 2017, there was another planned development that was approved through this committee for up to 50 dwellings, and that's on the other side of Twin Hills. So again, that kind of adds much more to the traffic and some other issues that others have came up here and discussed. I sat at the stop sign at Paula Drive and saw 120 cars in 30 minutes one afternoon go through. So they used it as a pass-through road, coming from what another neighbor mentioned, from Myatt Drive to avoid traffic. So I just want you to consider that a number of more dwellings are being considered in this area, and to add more certainly is going to take away from all the privacy that we've had for a number of years. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. Two-minute rebuttal.
Thank you. A few closing points for you. Number one, the property isn't in a designated flood zone. Number two, the pipe culvert that ultimately is beneath Twin Hills Drive, which is a five-foot diameter culvert, flows the hundred-year storm event from upstream. We looked at that. What is undersized is the extension of pipe out of that in a junction box over that picks up this drainage way, and that will be remedied with the development proposal. Number three, there's not a stream through the site, and both TDEC and Metro had been provided evidence. TDEC has agreed it's a wet-weather conveyance. Fourth point, there was never a notice sent out for 17 lots, because we were the only ones that issued the two notices for this meeting and such. So there may be some confusion about the number of lots and then duplex lots, but there was not a notice produced by us that was sent out to the neighbors. And lastly, there was an original preliminary plat approved in 2007 that had this exact same layout. It was for one more lot, 24 lots, and I think staff mentioned that. So it did expire, but the plan that's coming back before you now is pretty much that same plan. And lastly, I'll say, if this proposal does not move forward, nothing will ever change with regard to the drainage issues they're having. We can actually help make a difference by the improvements with this development. So with that said, I'll let you folks consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Sims, you want to go first?
This issue regarding TDEC, has there been any staff work on that? Or, I mean, is this in any way a protected site, the lake itself and the impact of the subdivision on the lake?
We have someone here from Stormwater as well, but if there were any construction permits that were needed that impacted the lake any way, they would have to go through their proper process of permitting with TDEC, which is a state process, but that is not something that we would review at our level.
Okay. And it might be good, Lisa, if you could help us remind our people from the neighborhoods about this whole idea that we're under the subdivision regulations here and what our responsibility is.
Sure. So the request is to develop under the existing zoning entitlements, so essentially just to subdivide the property into lots. The zoning code allows for cluster lots, which is what this proposal is. The review of a subdivision is primarily a technical review. It is reviewed under the subdivision regulations to make sure that it meets all of those standards. The subdivision process is a three-step process. This would be step one, which is a concept plan, where we're looking at the standards and things like stormwater are looked at from a very high-level review to make sure that there is enough room to handle any stormwater runoff, those sorts of things. The next level of review, if the concept plan were to be approved, is a final site plan. With that comes a full set of construction documents. And what that means is that they are reviewed by all of the metro agencies, public works, to make sure that the roads are being built to metro standards, stormwater, looking at downstream improvements if necessary, to make sure that all of those requirements are being met. And then the third step is final plat, which is where we would get any bonding for needed public infrastructure, and that's when the lots are actually recorded. And so that is the process.
I want to thank the neighborhood association. I think, as we know, neighborhood associations are becoming so very critical to our city, and I really appreciate all the concerns. Having said that, we are under subdivision regulations. This is for a concept. We're asking for fewer lots and fewer units than they're actually required. I think this might actually help the neighborhood with a lot of the issues they've got, so I think I'm fine with it.
Commissioner Gobel.
I agree with Commissioner Sims. I think it meets the criteria that we've got to judge from. I do want to compliment the neighbors on an excellent packet. I do think there's some issues there. I do know that stormwater can be very stringent, and they are taking a higher standard than they were took decades ago when a lot of these areas were developed. And I think that a lot of that would be mitigated during this process, so I tend to be for it.
Commissioner Mark.
I agree with the other commissioners, and is it fair to say if, at any point in this process, if they found that the plan did not meet stormwater regulations, they couldn't move forward, correct?
They will have to meet all of the stormwater regulations. Before the plan can get approved, which, you know, if meeting them means that they don't get this many lots, then that's what it means at the final site plan. And so essentially, this is the concept plan establishing the maximum, and then when the stormwater plans are reviewed, you know, if they find that they have to take out lots, then that's what they'll have to do. But they could not move forward until all of the stormwater regulations as adopted by Metro are met.
Okay.
Vice Chair.
Well, I think just for our own peace of mind, can we have someone from Stormwater come up? I would just be curious to hear a little bit more about thinking based on the photos that we've seen. And, you know, you said, Lisa, that in the second review, when they come in with the site plan, they have to go through all stormwater improvements, including downstream. And something one of the speakers brought up was sort of the broader drainage system. And so I guess I'm just kind of curious, how do you review this at that second stage, and how do you consider the overall drainage?
So everyone is required to meet stormwater quality and detention requirements, which means they're required to treat the stormwater runoff from their development as well as meet pre- and post-peak flows. They're not allowed to increase their post-developed peak flows. And they're also required to analyze downstream structures, so they have to have an adequate conveyance downstream.
So if there's other issues coming from properties around this, that will somehow get factored into, like, it was brought, that some of the issues are coming potentially from Rivagate Mall, and that would get factored into evaluating?
The flooding issues that the neighbors are experiencing, there seem to be a lot of different factors, and I can't really speak to that because that kind of thing would need further evaluation.
But that goes into your evaluation when you get to that second phase?
As far as the development goes, I just look at, we look at the impact from the development and see what, you know, they're not, they can't have an adverse impact downstream.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And ma'am, if you'll just state your name and position.
I'm Jennifer Noff. I'm with Metro Water Services Development Services.
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions.
For the record.
No further questions.
Commissioner Tibbs.
I don't have anything else to add. I agree with the, I think it meets all the subdivision requirements. I guess the only thing I would say, though, it seems like if this actually, kind of as Commissioner Gobel said, this will actually improve it, but I feel like that maybe another meeting with the neighborhood is essential because I think if you're able to describe to them how it will improve it, like, really go through it and explain it to them, then that gives them an opportunity to really have that interaction and, you know, the next time they're not here, or they're here on the other side supporting it because you've sat down and explained it to how potentially what you're going to do is actually going to help the situation. I think that's what's missing, based on all of their comments, we're more about that effect as opposed to what we normally hear about, you know. So I really would encourage that. And of course, the environmental study is, she said, that's all going to be done, but that would be the main thing. I would encourage another meeting to really explain it and to go through the technical details so they would have a better feeling for it.
Commissioner Black, you're here.
I have a question for staff about process. So you talked about this being the first level of review, and there'll be a second and third level of review. So will the final site plan and the final plat, will that come back before the commission? So, will the final site plan and the final plat, will that come back before the commission?
No. So, a final site plan, when it's submitted, so long as it's consistent with an approved concept plan, then it is an administrative review, because it is looking at those technical construction standards. And then final plat, so long as it's consistent with the final site plan, would also be an administrative review.
So, when you say administrative, I understand that there will be other Metro bodies to look at it, such as Stormwater. Does the planning staff see it?
Yes, yes. Yes, planning staff shepherds it through the process, and so, it's still submitted to planning staff, and then we distribute it out to the other agencies for review. And we make sure that all the other agencies have reviewed it, improved it, and that it's consistent before it's approved administratively by planning.
Got you. Thanks. Another question for, sorry, Stormwater. Sorry, it's a long walk, I know. So, just to make sure that I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying that when you are approving by Stormwater, when you're approving this development, if it is approved by Stormwater, your review does not, it does not ask whether the development is going to, your review asks whether development is going to harm Stormwater, not whether it's going to ameliorate the condition?
Right. I mean, we're, as far as there are all the flooding issues, we're not saying that we're, that this development is going to rectify or cure all of the flooding issues that you're, that we're seeing in the package, but this development, or any development, they're not allowed to cause an adverse impact downstream. So, they can't make the situation worse.
Right. Got you. So, it already looks to be really bad, so this development is not going to make it worse. And what Commissioner Tibbs was saying is, you're saying that it's actually going to make it better, which would be stricter than what Stormwater would require, right? Yes.
So, I did bring an exhibit. I just didn't hand it out, but Harbor Village is impacted by two different watersheds that you see in those pictures. There's two main culverts. We're the smaller of those two watersheds. There's 185 acres that goes through them, and there's not-
Hold on. Hey, everybody. So, this is the deal that we, hold on a second, please. This is the deal. We always act professional. We don't yell. We don't riot. So, we remain very calm, and if we don't, then we have to ask you to leave the room. Now, we don't, I don't like to do that, but this is a very professional commission. And, look, if you don't, I mean, there are other remedies after this body. You can find an attorney and sue the planning commission if you don't like the decision. And I say that to say, you know, there are other remedies, but being professional in this meeting is of utmost importance to me and the commission. So, if you'll please be professional, and we'll be professional as well, so I appreciate that. Go ahead.
So, to pick up, there are two different drainage basins that spill out into Harbor Village. One is from the Rivergate side, and it's about 185 acres, and the other one is the one from the Twin Hills Drive side, which is about 90 acres. Twin Hills Drive does flood under storm events that are as low as a 25-year storm and such. We can help remedy that as part of our development. We also can hold back the Stormwater on our development and try and miss the peak of the water coming from the other watershed to make things better to the extent we can. But there is a problem, and a lot of that problem is coming from the larger watershed, which is up toward Rivergate Village.
Okay. Now, sorry, while we have Stormwater here, I know that you've looked at this from a very high level, so you may not have gotten into the details that he has described, but from, and if you can't answer this question, that's completely fine, but does that, does what he just said, is that congruent with your understanding of the property?
Yeah, so I looked at it briefly, because we just heard about it yesterday. So, I mean, I did spend some time looking at it, and there are, like, there are two streams that seem to converge, and everything's trying to get into the lake. So, like I said, there's probably multiple factors that are contributing to the flooding issues downstream, and then we would need further evaluation and probably have to get with other personnel from the Stormwater department and see if they're familiar with the flooding issues. I don't know if they've reached out to our routine or remedial maintenance department and filed a drainage complaint, because we do have inspectors that will come out and investigate.
Okay. So, what I'm hearing is, one, from the neighbors, there's the ability to communicate directly with Stormwater regarding their issues. Two, when there's a final site plan and the final plan, which is a second and third level of review, you'll review it more heavily from your end, from Stormwater?
Right. We'll do a more, or more in-depth technical review during the final site plan review.
Okay. And then, three, you, even though you're not obligating yourself to fix all of the problems with flooding, you have said that you will be fixing, hoping to fix, endeavoring to fix, one of the issues that contributes to the flooding. And so, when we get to the final site plan and the final plat processes, maybe it is advantageous, like Commissioner Tibbs said, to have another meeting with the communities so you can drill down a bit about how your plans are going to help at least the flooding issues.
We can do that.
Thanks.
Commissioner Yehl.
One more question for Stormwater. If this site is actually serving almost as a wetland or a spun for the area, and it's collecting Stormwater, is, how is that factored into this?
Well, I mean, it's part of their design is to analyze the existing conditions and then the post-conditions, and they need to meet pre-conditions by infiltrating, infiltrating their Stormwater and detaining it so that their peak flows are less than pre-peak flows. So, that's something that the designer will take into consideration.
So, that would be considered, though. I mean, certain areas are, you know, on a hill, others are not. They're in, you know, low land, and if they're serving the greater watershed, then they would have a greater importance to sort of controlling Stormwater.
Right. I mean, they want to analyze their drainage area, the outfall point from their site. And that's, that's the point that they're going to analyze.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We need a motion. We need a motion. Someone.
I have a question.
Of course.
So, the applicant has said that he is willing to meet with the community at the second and third levels of review. Is that, can that be a condition to the concept plan? I know this is a different level of analysis for the commission. Not that I don't take you at your word, but just asking.
Do you have any views on that? I think it can be.
I would say, so I think that you mentioned it both, the final site plan and the final plat, but the final plat is really just kind of a, everything's already been reviewed. It's just to get it recorded, so it might be more appropriate at the final site plan phase when they're still in the design process as opposed to the final plat.
And yes, you can condition that.
Great question. So, Commissioner, do you want to make a motion? That's a great suggestion.
I do want to make a motion. I move that we approve staff's recommendation of approval with conditions, with the additional condition that the applicant meets with the community, the neighborhood association upon the receipt of the, I guess, is it appropriate for prior to or upon the receipt of the final site plan? So, he will get, they will get the comments, the analyses, the approvals from whatever they will need from the public works bodies, Stormwater, in order to inform the conversation prior to approval of the final site plan.
I think it needs to be prior to function in the way that you want it to. Prior to approval.
Prior to approval. So, the added recommendation would be that the applicant meets with the neighborhood association prior to approval of the final site plan.
That's a proper motion. And a second, any other discussion? Make sure we get everybody. Seeing none, all in favor of the extra condition and the approval with the extra condition, say aye. Post no, ayes have it. We are, we are on item 17.
I want to make one comment. There was never a meeting with them.
Ma'am.
I know it didn't sound a word, but there was never any meeting.
Well, and if we can have a staff member talk to them and make sure that we-
Thank you.
Thanks, y'all, for coming down. We appreciate it. All right. Item 17.
The next item on the agenda is a request to rezone from OR 20 to OG. Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The property is located on 21st Avenue South, just south of Hillsborough Village. The abutting buildings along the street are office use and multifamily. There is a multifamily land use directly behind the property and single-family residential across 21st Avenue South.
Hold on. If everybody could exit the room, please, and talk outside. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. But let's give them a second, just so we can. All right, why don't we start over? Let's start over. All right.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a request to rezone from OR 20 to OG. Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The property is located on 21st Avenue South, just south of Hillsborough Village. The abutting buildings along the street are office use and multifamily. There is multifamily land directly behind the property and a single-family residential across 21st Avenue South. The current zoning is OR 20 with RM 40 directly to the west. The policy is district office concentration with neighborhood evolving directly to the west. The goal of the district office concentration policy is to create districts that are mostly office uses while preserving the building rhythm along the street and maintaining the character of the neighborhood. Although office use is a suitable land use for this policy area, the building footprint that OG zoning will allow for would not be congruent with the neighborhood context. This is a small parcel located mid-block in a block that has a consistent development pattern of heights and setbacks. For these reasons, the requested OG zoning is inappropriate in this location. Therefore, staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you, sir. And we'll open this item for public hearing. The applicant has 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 for rebuttal. Welcome.
I will save two. Good afternoon. Thank y'all for your time and your service. I also want to thank Jordan for his work on this. He's been very helpful and responsive throughout the process. And also, Councilmember Cash, who's here, I appreciate him taking his time out of his day to be here. Do you mind if I flip to the street view? I was told I'm not allowed to touch the mouse. I want to be respectful. So, as we'll see in just a minute, the property, if you driven down 21st, the property that we're talking about, the building is what the neighborhood affectionately calls the muffin top building, which will become clear here in just a second. It's the next one. That's hard to see right there. As you can see, the second floor is cantilevered around and on each side of the first floor with a interesting third story that I've heard is pretty creepy to get up to. It's, you know, it's been there for a long time. It's been added to over time. It's just an interesting building, especially on a developing corridor such as 21st. By way of introduction, I want to introduce to my clients, my clients are the law firm of Martin, Heller, Patempa, and Shepherd. I have Matt Patempa here and Jennifer Shepherd. They will also, like, if we, I'm going to save some time for them to speak. Three of the four partners in that law firm live in the neighborhood. They all live within half a mile of their current office, which is at 21, 22, 21st, which is right next to the dry cleaner at the corner of Blair and 21st. They want to, they are part of this neighborhood. One of the partners, Sean Martin, has lived in the neighborhood for 20 years. They live in the neighborhood. They work in the neighborhood. They want to be a part of the neighborhood. They had the opportunity to do that by purchasing this property to pursue an office development. They have programmed out their needs for their office moving forward, and they think, they figure they need roughly 6,000 square feet. Due to the FAR restrictions prescribed by OR 20, we did not have enough FAR to meet their needs. Through conversations with staff, our original proposal was to do an MUL, which is an FAR, MULA, which is an FAR of 1.0. Brought that to staff. Staff advised MUL would not be supported by the policy, suggested an OG designation. So, we switched our zoning. Then subsequently, upon further evaluation, staff did not feel that OG was appropriate for the property. I think, so when you look at what our request is, I think, I think if you had to boil it down to one word, the word would be intensity. So, when you look at our request, you know, yes, in a vacuum, we are asking for an FAR request increase from 0.8 to 0.5, 1.5, which is significant. However, we're of the opinion that, given the size of the lot, it's 0.19 acres, we are limited on what we can do FAR-wise. Our height requirements, our restrictions under the bulk regs are the same for both OR and OG, so we're essentially limited by what we can do on the property, just given the size of the property. Additionally, there was a question about uses that are allowed under OG that are currently not allowed under OR. We've had, one of those, I think specifically, was hotel. We have talked about that with our clients. Again, our clients, and live in the neighborhood, want to be part of the neighborhood. They have been willing and open about pursuing any deed restrictions that are necessary to make the neighborhood happy, to say that they are not doing hotel. They want to do their office for the future here. And additionally, when we met with the neighborhood, there was actually a concern from the neighbors about what is allowable under the current zoning of OR 20 with, you know, all the normal concerns about residential being short-term rentals, things like that. So, we actually, and I'm, if Councilmember Cash may contradict this in a minute, but my, you know, my conversations with the neighbors were relatively positive, well, not relatively, was positive as it relates to the proposal here. So, we're just kind of in a position, we're dealing with what we, what we have. We're on 21st, which means, you know, there's a large right-of-way dedication that's going to be required upon development per the major collector and street plan. We're going to have to dedicate a five-feet, that's going to be a 12-foot dedication off the front in addition to the setback. We have a five-foot right-of-way dedication in the back to get the alley, so we're just continuing to get more and more constrained. So, FAR becomes harder and harder to hit. We think that the zone change to OG is the best way to bring the property back into, as part of the neighborhood. And with that, I'm going to actually, if my clients would like to speak, I'm going to let them introduce themselves, and I'll reserve two minutes.
Thank you, Chip. My name's Matt Patempa. I'm one of the partners at the law firm that just purchased this piece of property. We're really excited about bringing our office just down the street. I walk by this lot every day. I walk, I walk, I'll go a whole week without starting a car. I walk to work. It's currently an eight-minute walk. I'm adding a three-minute walk to my commute. My kids go to school across the street at Belmont Weekday School. I walk down the street to go to Bell Court Board meetings. My neighborhood is very important to me, and like Chip said, three of the four law partners can walk to work. So, we will be good stewards of this piece of property. We, you know, these are local jobs. We, we're a local business. We, we need OG rezoning to do what we need, you know, to get the square footage that we need. I heard the recommendation to disapprove, but I don't fully understand the logic behind it, because the intent, the vision of this portion of 21st Avenue is office space. That's exactly what we want to put there. As Mr. Hoerth mentioned, we are agreeable to some type of deed restriction, which could, if necessary, put some limitations on what we could do, but we want to bring a new, beautiful office to this corridor. We do feel that it's in keeping with the aesthetic of the existing neighborhood, and we would appreciate your consideration to approve the rezoning. Thank you.
Is there time for me to talk?
Yes, ma'am. Come on up. And if you want two minutes, you got to stop at two minutes.
Okay. I'm Jennifer Shepherd. I'm one of the partners at the law office. I just wanted to add just a couple of things to what Matt pointed out. We started our office six years ago, and we're currently renting at 21, 22, 21st Avenue. And we have been looking for a building for a while, and we want to stay in the neighborhood. That was really important to us. We started that- We started that office. We had four attorneys and a couple of support staff, and in six years, we've grown to 15 employees. So we employ 15 people from the middle Tennessee area. We support them and their families, provide benefits, and all of those things. We want to stay in the area, but we need to grow, and we cannot do that at our current place. So we need to move, and we really need the rezoning to be able to build a building large enough to allow us to continue to grow our business. So we're just asking for your consideration for us to be able to do that, and we're happy to talk about whatever restrictions need to be put on the deed. I know there was some concerns about maybe a hotel or something like that going in. That is not what we're interested in doing. We want to put a law office there. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We'll save two minutes for the rebuttal, and Councilman, we'll save you for the very last of the public hearing. That way, we can get your comments in for sure. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Come on up. Welcome, and please state your name and your address.
My name is Edward Henley, and my address is 1208 Third Avenue South. I actually did not plan on being here this afternoon to speak about this particular parcel, but in hearing some of the things that have been discussed about the concern of a hotel potentially coming to this location, I will raise my hand and take some blame for that. Myself and a colleague actually met with Councilwoman Berkeley at the time, as well as Mr. Cash, Councilman Cash now. And we were actually looking at this parcel as well as the one next to it, and actually had some conversations with people in the neighborhood about their interest and/or disinterest in something like that appearing, right, on the property. So I'll just take some responsibility for that since I'm here. Extremely convenient, I guess, considering my... Mine was deferred. But I just felt compelled to do that, considering it seems like that's something that's causing quite a problem to this group. So I did want to just take some time to do that. That's all.
Thank you. That was very nice of you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Saying none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Saying none, do you need a rebuttal, or...
I'm going to add one thing.
One thing, okay.
I think I added this.
I don't need two minutes, but we did have a neighborhood meeting. I don't know if Mr. Cash or Councilman Cash is going to talk about that. Again, generally supportive of what we were doing. We have worked with... We had representatives of various neighborhood associations there of their boards. So we have worked with the community, hear what they've had to say. And the takeaway was that it was positive and really more reactive than anything else as to what could go there, like positive towards what we could do as opposed to what could go there.
All right. Councilman.
Thanks. I didn't expect for my first time up here before y'all to contradict staff, but I do feel pretty good about this proposal. We met a couple of times about the proposal and with plans, and I did have reservations at first about the MUL zoning, and planning staff agreed with that, I think. And I felt better about the OG. I feel better about the OG. We... There is no love lost for the building that's there now. There were people excited about it going away. We had a community meeting, which had about six to eight people. I don't know... And so there were some positive... There was some positive feedback, and then there was also some concerns. I don't think there was any outright opposition among the people that were there, but some concerns came up. The hotel use was one of them, and I do think that came more from the... When it was clear that OG allowed hotel use rather than anything else. But I appreciate the gentleman taking some responsibility for it, but it was really... It was really more about the use, reviewing the uses for OG. And I don't think short-term rental is a concern with this property as it is now. It's more just a concern that, like, there's a residential building next to it, and there are lots of residential buildings in the area that seem to be going STR. So I think that was more of a global concern than a specific to that property concern as it is now. There was concern about parking, but the plans that they showed us have 17 spaces, and my understanding is that they are, according to codes, that they have to have six. So they're well above the number of parking spaces. Ingress and egress on 21st... Is there... Was there a map that we could... Like the... Like egress and ingress was a concern. If it's not right there, don't worry about it. Just there's a median that's kind of in front of the property, and so you can't turn right into the property. You'd have to go around one way or the other, and that was a concern. But that's going to be a concern, no matter what goes there. So I, as a councilperson, from a councilperson's point of view, I feel pretty good about this. I don't think, based on what they can get onto the lot, it's not a huge increase in density. And behind the property is neighborhood evolving, multifamily. And I heard that across the street are single family residential, but they're like home offices or they're residential property, like residential buildings, but it's... They're mostly office businesses that are across 21st. And actually, I've been on the 21st Avenue Corridor Steering Committee. I pulled some of those people into the discussion, and from both sides, both neighborhoods from both sides of 21st were represented at the meeting. And I think, you know, there are some changes that are going to be coming along 21st. That intersection that's kind of above that, where Magnolia comes into it, that's a kind of an intersection that needs some help because there is... There are some accidents there. But I think that's going to... That's already true. So I think that's all I wanted to say. I, you know, there were some concerns, but I felt pretty good about the responses and that it's not a huge increase in density, and it's not going to impact that section very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thanks.
Really appreciate you coming down. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing close. Commissioner Tibbs, you want to go first?
Generally, I have no real issue with it. I am concerned a little bit. My biggest concern will be how it's dealt with the nationally-registered, the Mayflower. So I would be... So I don't know. This is probably not necessarily the planning commission part of it, but I do... I am concerned contextually how that's going to be in relationship to it. Based on that little diagram, which was on another page, which just had some blocks on it, it seems like it'll still stay appropriate. I guess to staff, what is the height limitation? Would it still be able to, with the zoning, would that have any effect on it? Because I noticed you brought that up to the location adjacent to historic resources. Maybe I should ask that. What was your specific concern based on historic resources?
The max height is going to be the same as the zoning is now. It's 30 feet at the setback. It's sort of with the OG zoning, you're going to have more of the wedding cake situation where the run to rise is going to be a little bit higher. For the OR 20, which is what it is now, it's two to one, and with Office General, it's 1.5 to one.
So it's a height control plane after the 30 feet at the setback.
So was that your concern about it, Dan? Was the... No. What was your actual concern in regards to historic resources?
The scale and the intensity that's permitted. I mean, I think under the current zoning, OR 20, it's a FAR of .8. OG is 1.5. And so just looking at... There is the potential for more height. I think that the building that they showed was three stories, parking and two stories, but it's potential that there could be more, given the square footage allowances. It's just more than what OR is, and looking at the positioning, the size of the lot, the adjacency of the policy. So that's what we looked at.
Okay. Well, that would be my only concern. I mean, what's there now is not very contextual with the other places around it as well. But that's neither either nor the other. But so, yeah, that would be my only concern about it. It's just how it's contextually with the historic structures around it. It doesn't seem like, though, what you're proposing is going to affect that as much as maybe staff believes it would. But I'd be... I guess I'm interested to hear what others would have to say, but that would be my only concern.
Can I just ask Lisa to clarify? You assessed not the site plan that was proposed, but what's allowed under the proposed zoning. So it's different. I mean, it's a distinction. And so similarly with the... We, you know, we can assume that they'll build what they're saying they'll build, of course, but we take the long view on the zoning and whatever the uses are that are proposed, right? And so I'd ask you to clarify, is a hotel permitted under this zoning? Okay. So I think it's just helpful to draw a distinction between what's proposed and presented versus what can be done under the zoning. That's how we evaluate it.
I understood. So not based on the diagram, but based on if they... We make the change, and they change their mind, they could build whatever there. I mean, build something that may not be as respectful.
Correct. I think the first time I may have seen the diagram was today, actually, and so our review is only ever... And not of any fault of their own, but our review, and we will tell community members or councilmembers and applicants this, if they're requesting a straight zone change, then we're not going to review the... Any sort of conceptual site plan because we're going to assume... We have to assume that you're going to build the maximum of what could be built under the zoning. So that's where we are.
Last thing on that note, then. They did bring up about deed restrictions, and I didn't know we could get into that too much, but...
We can.
Basically, that would be essentially a private agreement of their own. The metropolitan government is not a party to that, and so it just wouldn't be enforceable. We wouldn't have the right, should they decide to build a hotel or a hotel was built 70 years from now. We can't come in and say, no, look, you restricted this property 75 years ago and said you wouldn't build a hotel, so tear it down. It's just not enforceable from our standpoint.
Okay. I'll think about it some more.
Commissioner Blackshear.
So if they have proposed an SP and in the SP proposed to build exactly what they have put in their diagram, would that be something that you would have looked favorably upon?
We haven't reviewed... We haven't fully reviewed that drawing in regards to setbacks or access or those sorts of things. You know, I mean, I think that we would be looking to try to maintain a certain scale to keep access probably on the alley, to make sure that there's not something that's incompatible in regards to height. I can't say what we would have determined in regards to that because that wasn't what we were reviewing.
That's fair. I don't have a problem with what the applicant is proposing, but that's because I don't have a problem with the applicant is proposing. Not necessarily the zone change, but what you have presented. So I do wonder whether that may be more appropriate, is to go the SP route rather than the straight zone change. It is a little weird that it is mid-block, and that would be the case whether it was a zone change or an SP, which is unfortunate. But you have presented, I think, a compelling case for your offices to be located there. But the zone change allows much more than your offices to be located there, and obviously the property could be sold and redeveloped, and it would be different than what we have seen as a great proposal in front of us. So I think I definitely am interested to hear what the commissioners have to say, but I think perhaps for me, an SP that would give us a little bit more control of what actually would be there might be something I would be more in favor of.
Commissioner Eamon.
What was presented by the applicant, you know, the local business investing locally and walking to work, kids cross the street at school is all things I think we're in favor of. I echo the comments, though. I think that there's plenty of projects that get planned, rezoned, and then never built because of one reason or another. So I have concerns about the scale and what is, you know, potentially done down the road. So I'm inclined to support staff.
Commissioner Moore.
So I think I'm more in line with Commissioner Blackshear because I do, I think, what's been talked about today. I'm very much in favor of. And because it's mid-block, and I think because of what is allowed under the OG zoning, I would feel more comfortable with SP because I think we would know exactly what we were looking at and approving exactly what would be going here. So I'll continue to listen as well.
Commissioner Eamon.
I agree. I think why did... When we were talking about alternatives to the existing zoning, why didn't an SP get discussed? Is there a reason you don't want to do an SP, or we're just trying to get away from the little one-off SPs?
I think from staff's perspective, we try to utilize SPs in situations where there is a unique circumstance or a broader planning goal that can be achieved through the use of an SP. And so if there is a base zoning district and we've got existing infrastructure and it gets us there, then I think that that's the preference. Lucy may want to speak to that broader.
The director has been encouraging staff to really evaluate what it is we want to solve with an SP. Sometimes it's the best option. I think when you're adjacent to historic resources, for example, that's something to consider. But I've, you know, sometimes we're using SPs to solve very discreet issues that should be solved in the zoning code. And so I'm trying to get the staff to change the zone. We... Maybe we need to do text amendments to fix the underlying issue. Now, in this case, you've got a fairly site, you know, specific context with historic resources in the back and historic resources in the front, and I think a historic resource on one side. So that, I think it's helpful, though, to say, why do you think an SP is appropriate? And so we can better define that for ourselves, too. But thank you, Lisa. That was well said. That's coming from me.
I... And I understand all that, and I appreciate that. I think that... I think the... This is kind of a unique situation. You're transitioning up out of that area. The building that's there and the additions that's been put on the front of it are kind of weird. I agree. I think, you know, I think a sensitive improvement to a viable business would be an excellent thing to do that's compatible. You know, I understand if we go zoning and things don't work out, and then the property gets sold, then we don't know what we get. So I'm... That's kind of where I'm leaning.
Commissioner Tibbs.
I'm probably one of those people that fuss about SPs a lot, but this is probably a really good situation where you need an SP. I don't like zone changes because we don't know what we get, and we don't have deed restriction capability. We have no way of ensuring that we actually are going to get what we're getting here. So, Councilman, I would encourage you to come back with an SP.
So now we'll need a motion. Vice Chair.
No.
I miss you, Vice Chair. I was so rude to me. I apologize.
I, you know, when I read what the policy is for this area and what they want to do, it's like it's exactly what they want to do, you know? So what they're proposing... I mean, I feel sort of badly that we didn't go forward with the SP first, just because if we recommended a zoning change and we're recommending a zoning change that we were ultimately going to disapprove, that doesn't really seem fair to the applicants. So I hope if we do go forth recommending an SP due to the reasons that we've identified, that we can do something to expedite the process for them or to help them through that process because I feel like... I don't know. I feel like we haven't really been fair to them.
We're happy to work closely with them to move forward.
Okay. Okay.
So we still need a motion.
So in addition to that question, the motion is going to be a disapproval without just a straight-up disapproval or approval of staff's recommendation. We cannot go forward with adding anything about an SP in our recommendation.
Yeah. You know, generally, sometimes when we, you know, if we deferred this, it would kind of prolong. But let's ask the director of what the... Her idea of this, or if we should disapprove this and then expedite an SP or...
Director?
I guess your option would be to disapprove and just support staff's recommendation. They've heard the discussion. It sounds like most of you would support an SP. That very closely mirrors what is being proposed. And so they could come back with a... I wouldn't have them do a new application. We could just amend it so they wouldn't be paying the fee twice. And then alternatively, you could request a... Or recommend deferral and ask the applicant their appetite for returning. Those are the two options.
If we recommend a deferral and then they... This can be recaptioned as an SP? If we recommend a deferral and then they, this can be recaptured as an SP?
I think we would want to renotice it because you're changing, I want the community to know what's being proposed, so we don't want to surprise anybody. So I would renotice it, but they could come back with a new proposed zoning.
Which is the more expeditious way to go about doing it? Lisa, do you?
I, I think it's the same. It's the same.
I think a deferral, just clean.
You think a deferral is better?
Just clean.
It doesn't. I mean.
We can for, we can include, back to your, your question about, we can include for the record in the minutes that we would like to see our staff expedite it. And that may take care of that. So we just say no to this one yet.
I will make a motion that we, we support staff's recommendation of a disapproval and ask staff to work to expedite a follow-up SP application for the applicant.
Second. So that, that's a disapproval of staff's recommendation of disapproval and to expedite an SP application. That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion?
I had a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
For the SP deliverables, can you remind us what would be, what would be, we would be presented in the way of, you know, elevations, things of that sort?
It varies. I think all SPs, some are more regulatory in nature, some have very specific site plans, some include detailed elevations, some include architectural standards as opposed to detailed elevations because we would get those at the final. And so I think it would just be us working with them to see what they want to submit. So it varies depending on the SP.
I'd love it if we could request some visuals that would help us with kind of the scale and rhythm of the street, bulk massing, that sort of stuff.
You can request it.
I request it.
I would request that those visuals be included in the SP as part of the SP.
Perfect. Any other questions? So we had a motion, it was properly second, we're still in discussion. Any other discussion? All in favor of the staff's recommendation with the recommendation also to refile as an SP? Say aye. Pose no. Ayes have it. We appreciate y'all. We're trying to work with you. I hope you see that we're sensible and, councilman, thank you. I know you'll see this through.
Thank y'all.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we are on other business. We've already adopted the calendar. We are on historic zoning. Commissioner Tibbs, anything on historic?
Actually, I do. Neighborhood conservative conservation guidelines. We have been working on those. I understand they still have been deferred. Two more meetings because there, there's more public meetings to discuss it, but those are important. So for anyone listening to try to attend any of those, I don't have the dates in front of me or locations, but I assume they'd be on the Metro Historic website. Also legislative thing, Councilman Syracuse is sponsoring property tax abatement for improvements to historic resources within historic overlay. So that's something that's, I guess is in council now. I don't know if you know that. On a more funner note, there is a city cemetery living history tour this Saturday. At 2:00.
Sounds like Commissioner Blackshear is killing.
I think she's going to be the first, I think she's going to be the first one there.
Good place to let little boys run.
And also the district's annual progressive party is tonight, which Metro Historic Council, Commission is co-founded and are co-sponsoring. And that's all I have.
Nice update.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's a lot of good stuff and I love your passion for historic items.
And the next meeting that. And the next meeting that you're referring to is October the 21st at 6:00.
Perfect. Parks, Commissioner Haines is not here. I don't think we have any updates from Parks, do we?
Nope.
Commissioner, nope. And executive committee report, I, I think I want to just say thank you for approving the calendar and family time for everyone. I think that the vice chair and I really appreciate that and the director, so thank you for, for doing that. And I think it's easier on all of us, so, and that, that's good. And I, I do want to thank the mayor for coming down. I want to reiterate that we have a really strong foundation in, in the commission, in the planning commission, and I think because of our staff and our director, and so I think we have a very, very strong foundation for moving forward. Yeah.
So we have in the past had workshops with the new, with the mayors. It would be very interesting to see if we could set something up, I mean, early 2020? Is that something on the?
Absolutely. I'm pleased.
I think we could hear his agenda and thoughts.
Absolutely. My goal, I'm sorry. Do you?
Yeah, no, no, no. Actually, the director and I started talking about this and we, I think it's very appropriate. We're going to, we always have a lot of workshops, but once the, the mayor, whoever that was going to be, we want to make sure that we have, spend some time with, with the mayor and making sure that we are all on the same page in moving forward and, and looking at how we do things and getting better at what we do, and we're always looking at it. So I think, director, what is kind of your vision for timeline on that?
So my goal is as soon as we get a council rep on-boarded, we're going to have a couple of sort of orientation meetings and we're going to talk about the neighbor-to-neighbor paper that the mayor referenced. And then my hope would be sort of early next year to have a retreat with the commission. It's not really a retreat. It always sounds like flowers and candy, but it's not. We'll try to make it creative, though. And then we would invite him as we've done previously, and he's shown such a strong interest in land use and, and neighborhood engagement that we will work to sort of set an agenda with him, so he has plenty of time to work with us and make us a part of his, his, his vision. So my hope would be early next year, but obviously we would coordinate with him. I want to give him a little time to settle in.
Excellent. That sounds like a great plan and we'll make sure that, and then also if you have concerns or just like always or thoughts as we can go down the next year, please share them with Lucy and then, and then we can, we can work through those things and, and I appreciate the commissioners doing that. Anything else, director, on your? Yep.
I wanted to welcome Evan Cathy. Evan, wave your hand. Evan has joined the staff to work on community building, neighborhood engagement. He's not a planner by training, but is a person who has worked previously with the mayor's office on neighborhoods and it seemed like it was very fitting in this moment to bring somebody aboard who can bring a strategic vision to our work. I'm looking at both sort of operational adjustments as well as process adjustments to how we're doing our business, and so I really wanted somebody on the team who had done that work previously. And so welcome Evan. Evan is from Smyrna and has spent time in the State Department and abroad, and so he, he's had a lot of experience, well, a native Tennessean has had a lot of experience outside of our country and probably some challenging places to work. So welcome.
Excellent. And then legislative update, we do not have the council member yet, but I'm assuming we're going to get that, the council member soon.
Yes. So there is an election. We're one of two commissions where they, the vice mayor does not appoint, they actually elect. I don't know if that is good or bad. I don't know what that says about us, but they run and so we're special. And so I believe that we will have a nominee, not a nominee, a selection at the second meeting in October. Is that right, Lisa?
Yes. The election of the, the person that serves on the planning commission is also chair of the Planning and Zoning and Historical Commission, Committee at the council, and that is on the agenda for Tuesday.
You got something else?
I wanted to point out on the calendar, the January meeting date is a bit unusual. We typically are a second and fourth, but looking at holidays and deadlines and those sorts of things, we have shifted the January 2020 to the third Thursday. So just don't, if you come here automatically on second and fourth, you find yourself drawn to this building, you know, it's on the third Thursday in January. Okay? Thanks.
Only January. Yeah.
One meeting November, December, January. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. It's a, that completes our agenda. Is there a motion adjourned? Or adjourned?
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.